All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Public session. And to announce from our closed session, we had, we hired someone. Director Charles Monahan. We hired Director of Workforce Development. He'll be starting this contract as July 16, 2018. And the initial contract end date is June 30 of 2019. And he is equivalent to Range 15. Congratulations, Charles Monahan, who we all know and is on here tonight. All right. And now we'll call for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to every republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Moving on to 5.3, adoption of the agenda. Any objections? Are any questions? Then agenda is adopted. Onto 6.1, public comment. Public comment and guidelines. At this time, the Board will devote a total of up to 15 minutes for comments to the Board of Trustees regarding any subject not appearing as an agenda item for this meeting, but over which the Board has jurisdiction. The public may ask the Board to place an item related to the business of the district on a future Board agenda. No action or discussion will occur at this time on such items. Individuals will be limited to five-minute presentation. At this time, the Board Chair will poll those in attendance regarding their intent to speak on any item on the agenda. Is there any public comment? We will hear from Matt Pope of American Canyon.
I assume this is where I go. Yes, hi, everybody. Chairman, members of the Board, my name is Matt Pope. I live in American Canyon. And from 2011 through 2014, I had the privilege of working for the California Legislature. Specifically, I was the District Representative for Napa and Solano County for California State Senator Norine Evans. During her tenure, Senator Evans introduced a number of progressive bits of legislation. One that I was particularly proud of was Senate Bill 1017. And this was a bill that had come up a few times. And what it proposed to do, which would be, for many, considered to be a somewhat a common sense solution, but also a very bold and sometimes controversial solution, but it would propose an oil severance extraction fee for the state of California. California, as you might know, is one of 36 states that produces, or is an oil-producing state, but is the only one of those 36 that does not have a severance extraction fee. All other states do. The proposal that Senator Evans put forward was that that funding would then go to support, particularly the junior college system, as well as the CSUs and the UCs, to help control the costs and to help offset some of the problems we have sometimes with raising property tax revenue and having to resort to bond financing, which is, I know, something this Board has had to wrestle with a number of occasions. So I've heard discussions that that might be something that this Board has been interested in the past or has looked at. One of my responsibilities as the District Representative was to find support within the district to give testimony. And the biggest hotbed of support I found, hands down, were students here at Napa Valley College, many of whom organized to go up to Sacramento and provide testimony on behalf of this, to give testimony as students who are facing the rising costs of education here in California. And they were greatly supportive. So just wanting to return the favor and say, you know, I'm actually in a different capacity working with Senator Evans again right now. And she, I think, would be interested in providing any background or information if there is interest in this topic. But resolutions of support, I think, from the ground up could be a really great way to push this issue forward because, once things get to Sacramento, sometimes the interests make sure that they don't go through. So if there is any interest, I know that's not for discussion now tonight, but I would certainly be willing, I think Senator Evans would be willing, and we would definitely support any statements of support that this body might be interested in. Thank you very much.
Matt, can I just ask a quick question? Is there any legislation at all similar being proposed?
None that I'm aware of. I think Governor Brown's last instruction in arena is, I don't want to see this bill ever again. So I think, I think other legislators have taken that hard, but I could be wrong. I'm not sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there any other public comment? All right. Seeing none, close of public comment. We'll move on to constituent group reports and start with Academic Senate Report Amanda Badger President.
Good evening, Board. I will keep it brief. I would like to just state, heartiest congratulations to Charlie Monahan and his new and ongoing now role at our college. I know for a fact, he has been just a tireless and dedicated employee of this college. And it is gratifying that it is now a permanent position. In addition, this is personally a very exciting announcement for me, that you have approved the hiring of a full-time Academic Senate Secretary. And I have, I am exceedingly grateful that this has been approved. Liz Nesbit Rivera will be a wonderful addition to this campus. I expect that she will hit the ground running. And I want to take the opportunity right now to thank Cynthia Gosling, who has very aptly stepped up in this interim period to support the Senate. And it is an enormous job with many moving parts and, at times, many bosses. And that is a challenge, I think, for anyone. And Cynthia has risen to it beautifully as her predecessor, who was poached from me at U, Ron. And so, anyway, moving forward, I can't wait to start working with Liz. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Administrative Confidential Senate Report, Ken Arnold.
Good evening. So, short report, because we are in the summer doldrums. I guess there's really no, no wind in the breezes around here right now. So we sort of always happy with that. What I would like to say is congratulations to Charlie. He's, Charlie, I've worked with, the pleasure of working with him for quite a few years. And we certainly appreciate him. I think the, watching the hospitality program go, this is less of a Senate report, but I was out watching Scholar Eats in, at the Silverados. And it was really gratifying to watch that, how that sort of goes as a full circle with students receiving instruction and then, you know, getting that practical experience and stuff. And it was really gratifying to see that. And I think that's a, that's a great thing. So really, not much from our end, other than we continue to recruit for Leadership Academy. And we will be, again, doing Leadership 2.0 this year, which will be the first time that we're doing it with other instructors, really, Ron and I stepping back a little bit and giving the reins to newly-minted folks. And we are looking forward. So, again, thank you. We haven't, one Board member, we still are recruiting. And hopefully, you know, we'll be reporting on leadership as it comes up.
Thank you, Ken. Associated Students of Napa Valley College Report, just in time, Rafael Manzo.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Well, it is July, kind of going to feel like a continuation of my June report, which is that it's really that beginning time for our new team, our new board that was elected in April. And so we take these two summer months, just before August, to do all of our orientations, all of our trainings. And we have our Leadership Retreat scheduled for August 6 through the 8, with some possible additional days. It's just before Flex Day and the August Board Meeting. And so that's really what we're focused on right now. We've had a few meetings over summer, and we're still meeting, taking care of business and just, as usual, and planning ahead for the fall semester that's coming as well. But just trying to get everybody trained so that they understand what their responsibilities are. So that's really mainly what our activities are. But as a constituent president, you know, I've been reflecting lately that it's, you know, it's my responsibility to report not only the activities of my group, but also their concerns. And as a leader, as the leader of the group, I too have concerns. And so I'd like to share one with you, that is, last spring, I served as the student representative at the Faculty Business Committee. And there was a meeting just before the summer where I learned that the process of faculty hires is undergoing a revamp. And the subgroup that's working on it revealed that one of the many ideas that's in the works for that is to significantly reduce and/or possibly remove completely student representation on hiring committees for faculty hires. And that may lead to hiring committees in general for non-faculty hires as well. And so that's very concerning to me. I raised concerns at that meeting because I, it was the first I'd heard of it. And it also seemed very final. It seemed like it was already decided. But Faye Smiley, who's the committee chair for Faculty Business Committee, let me know that it's definitely still in the works and that those things still have to be voted on and will be vetted through, through various other channels and eventually make their way through Council of Presidents and here. But it, to me, it felt very final. And really, where my concern stems from is just that students have not always served on hiring committees, you know. Who gets to be in the room and really go through applications and decide who the finalists will be? You know, who's going to really be on this campus, if it's a part-time, or especially those full-timers that, you know, will presumably be here for 10 years plus beyond? You know, it's really who's going to be part of this college community, this campus community? And so when I first joined ASNBC in 2013, you know, it was one of my favorite things to do right off the bat, was join hiring committees. And it's still my, pretty much my favorite part of the job. I have attempted 11 committees in four years, and I've completed 10. There was only one that I had to drop out of. And it was, it hurt me so much to do it, but I had to. But I've completed 10 in four years. And it's, I've hired in a range of departments, library, EOPS, Caracal Works, the Welcome Center, Spanish Department, and of course, five positions in Arts and Humanities Division, and one Vice President position here for the college. And in all of those 10 committees, you know, I, my committee chairs, my hiring committee chairs were very pleased with me and always had just the kindest things, kindest praise to give because they said that I was so involved and that the whole point of having a student in the room for a hiring process was, was exactly what I was there for, was to provide a perspective. My lens as a student on campus, what I look for, what I, and what I, more importantly, what I believe my fellow students are looking for in a full-time faculty position, you know, hire, is just, it's so unique. And I oftentimes raised my hand, I got a little brave, and I raised my hand to bring up points, concerns, questions, that nobody else was bringing up. And I stand by that. I'm a very modest person, but I'll own up to where I think my strengths are when I contribute to a team. So to me, I just, it felt very final. And as time moves forward, now that we're in the summer, it just feels more and more final, like students will definitely not have a future on hiring committees. And if they do, it won't be in the vetting process. And there's a lot that's going into it, mainly the idea that substitute, like needing to get a substitute teacher because the committee will have to meet on a day when you would normally have class. And the reason why is because the student representative is the one who cannot meet on a day that would otherwise be perfect for everybody else. But I think that's a gross generalization, and it's not fair to just put that argument forward, that it's the student representative's fault that we can't meet on a day when, that would not require substitute teachers, like for faculty representatives to attend that hiring committee. I think that it's just a lot of generalizations being made, and it's really unfair, especially, it just kind of invalidates all the work that I've done on hiring committees. I feel like I've contributed so much that's valuable. And I've always been very thorough and fair and consistent when I score applications and when I am in the room deciding finalists. So it's just really alarming to me, really concerning. So I hope that you'll take note of this and investigate, really, you know, take a look, take an interest because, you know, students didn't always used to serve on hiring committees, and it's all about to be taken away like that. It was very, very alarming, very scary to me to think that we just lose it like that. And it feels very final. So that's really my report, is that we're just getting our new people trained, and that's just one point of interest that's kind of concerning me. But this is just a report. I don't expect comments or anything. And just as last month, I have to get going to class now. I have a summer class. So thank you.
Thank you, Rafael. And I notice Classified Associate Report, Jan Schardt is not with us, but guess who is? Classified Senate Report, Michael Raifert.
We actually are having a busy year this year. We're going to be doing a retreat in the fall, in October, to Lake Tahoe on a weekend, all the Cabinet members. And then in the spring, we're going to do a retreat up in Upper Valley Campus. So that'll give a chance for the employees, the classified employees up there, to actually join us together. So we're setting that up. We're also doing a fundraiser with Merrick at the, at the, not the retreat, but it's the Flex Day. Thank you. Flex Day. He's going to bring the truck over, then we're going to help him with the food and stuff. So we're going to make a fundraiser out of it. Also, we're currently going through changes in our, my group. We're going to add some members because we have a lot of classified that are interested in joining the Senate now. So our movement is, and communication is starting to come out. And I want to thank Tara for that because she actually had a meeting with us, and it went well. And now we got people communicating. So you'll be seeing a lot of us around. So, other than that, I did a lot of research on shared governance. So I think I got a hand on that right now. And also, the 4CS, which is the Classified Senate for the state, they actually have a quarterly report that I have to do every quarterly semester, I should say. And I'm starting to communicate with them. So we're going to have them come down and do some speeches and stuff like that. So I'm looking forward to this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Faculty Association Report, Kristi Uemono.
Good evening, everybody. I've not been on campus since the last Board of Trustees meeting, just going to be honest. But I have just come back from a trip to Minneapolis. I was there in the great state of Minnesota for a whole week at the NEA, National Education Association's Representative Assembly, where teachers from 50 states come together, all 50 states, come together and talk about the direction of NEA going forward for the next academic year. I had the pleasure of giving a speech, actually, which was the highlight of my week, to 10,000 people on a Jumbotron. And I did speak about Napa Valley College and the strides that we've made here over the year, and some of our achievements. And every time I met someone new, and they always ask, well, where are you from? And I say, Napa. Whether they're from Kansas, whether they're from New York, from Hawaii, they always say, ooh, Napa. So that was very cool. I'm going to be going to the CTA President's Conference, July 20 through the 23rd. And I'll be attending an Equity and Diversity Think Tank after the weekend is over. So I'll be there Sunday and Monday for that. And I'll be going to the Summer Institute at UCLA and Living in Dorms at the end of July and beginning of August to, it's a Union Issues Institute. So we'll be talking a lot about, about increasing membership and about communications. And I look forward to seeing you all again very soon. Thanks very much.
Thank you. You're busy. All right. Now we will hear from 8.1, Superintendent President's Report. And first with the Napa Valley College Foundation Report, Anne Branch.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm excited to say that our Dr., Professor, Dr. Chris Burditt, the matching gift campaign that we started in mid-March, we're running through the end of the year, we've just a couple thousand dollars shy of our goal, so we're almost there. We'll probably make that by next month for that 25K matching gift.
Awesome.
We've done some community engagement activities. I participated in the Art Association Scholarship Luncheon. Our Board and myself presented to the scholarships to high, to the high school students graduating through about mid-June. And it was really fun meeting the students who were coming here in the fall. So we have a lot of excited new students coming here, which makes us feel good. We presented to, for the Wine Presentation, the New Center for Wine Education, we presented to Mel Mannion of Wine Spectator. She was out here from New York, and she's been with the company for 30 years. And since then, they've gotten back to us, and they want to be involved. So that's a really, really good momentum going on with this project. Dr. Kraft was with Bill Hardy and Michael Baldini, and they met with Alex Ryan, who's the CEO of Duckhorn, and he's also very excited. And he is helping us get connected to the community through some of his contacts. So we'll have more to report on that later. We also, our Board meets next week, and we're going to be voting on a new accounting and auditing firm. So I know Mr. Parker will be really happy about that. Yay. And so we're moving ahead with all that. So that's it for now.
Thank you. A lot of great stuff. 8.2, President's Cabinet Report.
Yeah, I would just say first that Vice President, Academic Fair's Eric Scherer is away at the Curriculum Institute. So he gives his regrets, hated to miss this meeting. And Oscar, maybe we'll start with, start with yours.
Thank you. First of all, I want to apologize because I didn't have a chance to gather too much of information of the activities. I was on vacation, which meant pretty much watching all the World Cup games. So my family was, I was very pleased to get up at 5:00, 6:00 in the morning to watch the games with me. So that's why I didn't get a chance to do too, too much of the report. But one, one item that they want to show a bit, and show off a bit, is that on the 28th of June, we had a, we had 14 folks who are part of a group that are studying labor throughout, throughout the world. And these folks were from Sweden, from Norway, England, and California. And they were here because they're at UC Davis for, for three weeks doing a study on this global issue of farm labor. And so they learned that, that Napa College had been involved in pretty good, a history of migrant workers here in California, here in Napa Valley, including the exhibit that we have outside here. So they asked if they could visit us, and so we arranged for them to come visit. And from all accounts, they're very pleased with presentations. Dr. Kraft was, was, was great enough to have given the welcome. I believe he also gave him bands of, of Napa College at safety university. So this is one, one activity that I think really puts a straw in, in the cap of Napa Valley College, and it's something that I anticipate doing more, more of. The other is that tomorrow, the, the Napa County Hispanic Chamber is celebrating its seventh event, and Dr. Kraft is one of the recipients of an award that's going to present. So congratulations to you, Dr. Kraft. Job well done. And lastly, Sunday, at, I believe it's going to be at 11 o'clock, the final of the World Cup will take place. So make, make sure that you make your reservations at your couch and, and have your beer next to you, okay? And go Croatia. Thank you.
Who is it? How do you spell that?
Croatia.
I'm just kidding. The, wonderful, thank you. How about, how about you, Bob?
Not sure I can follow that. But for Administrative Services, the three areas in Administrative Services, first of all, for Institutional Technology Services, we're interrupted here on campus for a period of time this week. It was actually due to a virus attack on, that impacted two of our servers on campus. Institutional Technology has addressed the issue, rebooted those servers, brought them back to life, and installed some enhanced firewall and antivirus software that we're currently testing to prohibit an attack like that from happening again. The Director of Institutional Technology, Eric Hauck, also sent an email out to all staff this afternoon to let them know the steps that we're taking to address some of the issues that we've been experiencing on campus. And so to get everything up and running and stabilized in time for the fall semester. You will also be seeing a proposal for an upgrade to our telephone system. That's being presented to you this evening. In facilities, we completed, substantially completed, the second half of a roofing project on the gymnasium or the 600 Building in June. And so that roof has been, over the past year, been completely replaced. We also have some Prop 39, or Energy Efficiency Funding, projects that were approved by the State Chancellor's Office and PG&E. And so those will be taking place over this fiscal year, 2018, 2019. Some of the things that are happening is upgrading and replacing the chiller and air handlers at the Upper Valley Campus, some lighting upgrades, both at the Upper Valley Campus and other interior spaces here, here on the main campus. These funds expire this year, so we will not be receiving. It was a five-year project funded through the funds that were collected as a result of Prop 39. And so that program ends this year. In the Business and Finance Office, the staff are busily paying final invoices for last fiscal year and opening up purchase orders for the new fiscal year. And if you visit the Business and Finance Office, a reconfiguration of that workspace was begun this week to make it a more efficient space, very low-cost, really moving some furniture around, acquiring some new furniture, repurposing some filing cabinets, but to make that space work a little more effectively. And that's my report.
Thank you, Bob. Charo, do you have any separate report? No? Okay. Thank you. Doug, if you've got something? Doug is test-marketing the smallest of the new Tesla electric vehicles.
2018 cherry apple red.
There you go.
Dual breaks. It's a pretty standard clipping service this month, but we have an extra surprise for you, and that's the rest of the media that we do. We do social media, we do some reports in the Register and advertising. So we'd like to show you just the other stuff we do besides news. You've got your Facebook. This is from Scott Allen. If you scroll down, you can see a few more examples. Keep going. Bilingual peach jar. School media Twitter. How many Twitters were there? Could you go back up? People reached 19,061 engagements. Facebook, Twitter, the Register website. Google AdWorks. Festival Napa Valley Magazine. And we just added just a couple photos from the parade, which was a great success. That's all I have.
These are good, Doug.
Thank you, Doug.
Yeah. And I think one reflection that we could all see as you're scrolling down, there's a central, easily identifiable theme of color. So our kind of, our NBC look, people respond to it well and can easily identify it. I guess it'd be akin to a great label on a bottle of wine that you would be able to recognize. So that's paying off. Thank you. Are you going to do this on a regular basis? Have these come in? Good. Thank you. Wonderful.
Ron, can I ask a quick question? On the data that we're getting, are there any averages as to, like, for instance, if I look at the Napa Valley Register website, and it says that the clicks are 12%? Do we know, is that good? Is that average? Or? Or any comparisons there? You don't have to...
I really hate to speak for Scott, but we think we have more impressions than we have clicks. You can see that. We need more clicks, and so that's the objective in the months ahead.
Okay. All right. If we could just maybe see, it'd be nice to, you know, when we look at these numbers, to understand if those are good numbers, average numbers, or what?
And Carolyn may have a bit of a response as well.
Yeah, Carolyn.
Just to let you know, those are not great numbers, they're okay, but we are evaluating whether the register's web presence is our best venue for students.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Makes sense. Yes.
Yeah, thank you for showing us this. The only one I just kind of, I don't know, some question marks came up was the one in the heart of the community with people drinking wine and toasting. I don't know, it's just, I just don't know what that has to do with education, people drinking wine at a table. I don't know. It's just weird to me. It just doesn't seem like it has anything to do with students, or education, or programs, and it just kind of jumped out, just to give a perspective.
Yeah, so that magazine and that ad is more of an institutional promotional piece, not so much aimed at enrollment. It was in the Festival Napa Valley Magazine, which I don't know, I should bring you some. It's more of a, I don't know, it's a Napa Valley life kind of demographic.
Yeah, I guess I still stand by it. I just think it's odd. I'm just putting it out there, just so somebody gets a different perspective. I just think it's kind of strange, but anyway. Okay. Just giving you feedback.
Okay. Thank you.
And Ron, your report?
Sure. Thank you. A couple things. Start with the state look a little bit, the cabinet, and I have certainly been, you know, reviewing and looking at the state budget, and it's a good one for community colleges, as it has been over the past few years. So the governor is still, is continuing to do what he said he was going to do, which was support of community colleges and higher ed, so very happy with that. If you come down one layer to the chancellor's office and our own system, Bob and I have been talking about it, and he's got a more full presentation in September when we address the, you know, the final budget, but the, it's, they're still figuring out state budget, new formula, how that applies across the state. Most of that will not be relevant for us, since we're a community support institution, but it's still good for us to keep our hand in, really understand it, and we'll unpack that as we go. But it will definitely impact Solano and Santa Rosa, and could negatively impact them in some ways as well, so we'll keep an eye on it. There's a budget, there's a link to a budget letter there. Locally, I noted here that I sent out an email to college constituents about our continuing progress on the bond feasibility. We are still going to continue in the process of gathering input. The latest informational poll that we got is posted there for you at this link, and it's been up in the newsroom. It really shows that the community is still in high alignment with our priorities, which is a good thing, but our margin of error, you know, in terms of reaching out to 55, hasn't really changed based on several events, I think. One is the complete unrest at the national level, too much economic uncertainty for the business communities. You can see that all across the state, and our consultants are giving us the same feedback from other districts, and municipal bonds as well. California's own version of insanity, which is lots and lots of rules and regs that are being kind of reorged as we go. The state's doing very well in terms of its economic power, and especially the Bay Region, but people are starting to get edgy about the top of the market, how high can it go, those pieces. And then locally, we have the same issues. Napa's kind of in the throes of, you know, recovering from fires and disasters. The affordability index is very high, housing is an issue. So we felt, you know, based on all that, that we are just going to continue the process, reach out. We're going to especially gear up our Speaker's Bureau comments, work with small community groups, continue the engagement and see where we go, and just like we were in '14, just continue the process.
Dr. Kraft? I clicked on the link, and then I wasn't sure, so 2018 media releases, so which one is the summary of the most recent poll?
There's two there. One is a letter, and then the other, the one that says Educational Priority Survey is the survey.
So that's the most recent survey?
Yeah.
And I haven't looked at it yet. So it actually has like the survey questions and then a summary of the results?
No, we don't receive the survey questions from, we get the work product from our consultants, which is their document that they return to us, which is the alignment of priorities. They don't share with us the individual questions, nor do we request that, so that's not part of what we would get.
So we don't give input into them? We don't collaborate with them to develop the actual survey?
We do, on the front end, but we never really saw the actual survey. I think the survey is out there. We could certainly get you a copy of the survey.
Yes, please.
Yeah, sure. That's all my report.
Thank you. All right. Approval of minutes, 9.1. Seeing no objections. Minutes approved. Moving right along to 10.1. First reading of board policies. We have a, you've got them pulled up? Okay. So we have four policies that we have showing changes proposed by the policy analyst for our first reading, and we'll look at each one like we did the last time, and just look for consensus, or comments, or anything at this point for the first reading. All right. So we have BP 2610. Any comments, questions, or anything you'd like to add on that? All right.
Actually, I just, I mean, I'm assuming this went through the President's Council, and everybody was okay with that one, correct?
No, these are, these are Chapter 2, right? So they don't, they have a different track.
Oh, these are chapter, okay.
Yeah, we're still in that chapter.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. All right. So moving right along to 2710. Any comments on that? All right. We will move right along to BP 2716. Political activity. Pretty straightforward. Any questions, comments? All right. Moving right along. BP 2750.
Actually, I have a question. I'm not against it, I just had a question. So I'm assuming the part about board members not being out of the state for, what was it, 60 days, is because they'd be missing two board meetings? I just thought it was interesting that they focused on the number of days that board members are out of state versus like how many board meetings you would miss, but is that what they're trying to go at, is that you're not, you're missing board meetings?
It is. Exactly. And also the kind of fiduciary duty to your constituents.
Right, to be here, to know what's going on.
It addresses kind of the workload, though, too, because a lot of people, in the past, many people had a kind of a nine-to-five at a regular institution. There are so many consultants now as elected trustees, up and down the state, that they can easily be gone for a meeting, you know, but two, they have to fly back and pick it up.
Right. All right. Seeing nothing additional there. Looks like we can move forward with those board policies to the next step. All right. Moving on to 11.1. Approval of consent calendar. Is there any comments, concerns, objections to the consent calendar? Seeing none? Consent calendar approved. And action items. Are we ready to vote electronically on those? All right.
And Catherine, just reviewing from last time, are you going to, are we calling out for our student trustee at the beginning?
Call out.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I'm ready to go.
All right. Great. 12.1. Resolution ordering governing board member elections. Do we need to read that out? No? Okay.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Iverson moves, and Segura, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're doing electronic, yes.
Okay. I marked it unanimously.
Okay. We're not used to things moving so quickly.
That was a pretty easy one. If you guys voted against it, I would...
Ratified financial documents, 12.2. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Baker Iverson? Okay. And trustee Quaja?
Yes.
Okay, that is carries unanimously.
Thank you. Human resources document, 12.3. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Segura Iverson?
Thank you. Okay.
Any discussion? All right. Trustee Quaja?
Yes.
Okay, that carries unanimously. Thank you.
12.4. Product Services and Industries Agreement.
Move approval.
Second, anyone?
Aye, second.
Baker Segura?
Okay. Baker Segura. Okay. Yes.
All right.
Can I make a motion at this point, when you start an item, action item? Can I make a motion, or can I second it at this time?
He can. Oh, yes. He can, right.
Yes, you can second.
Yes.
But this one has already been seconded.
Yes.
He's just wanting to know for the next.
No, actually, I'm sorry, with his name not being in the list, I'm unable to choose his name.
Somehow we've gotten around that in the past.
We did.
Yeah, we had a workaround. We can take it down and then...
Change it?
Change it later in the system.
Okay, but that means I'll have to mark somebody and then make a note of it and change it later.
Right. We'll just have to make a note.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. That has been unanimous. It carries. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. 12.5. Napa Valley Support Services Agreement. Would you like to make a motion?
So move.
Second.
Quaja Iverson?
I think that is proxy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bookstore operating agreement.
Actually, I have a question about that one.
Let's get a motion in a second, and then we can open discussion.
Move for approval.
Second. Iverson Quaja? Any discussion? Trustee Martinson?
Yeah, I just was wondering what the change was, from the one that we approved last month.
The changes from last month are in the markup, so the red line. If I can find that for you. It's the purple underlines in our document? Yeah, it's more of a blue line, I guess, but everybody's seeing something different. I was looking for the red. There's no red. Okay.
Is there any further discussion?
No.
All right. Online voting is open.
I think it's seconded.
We did get a second. We already got a first.
Yes.
Yes, you did.
Okay, that is unanimous. Carries. Thank you.
All right. And Board Member Compensation. Do I see a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. Baker Quaja? Any discussion on that? Just for the, for the record, that comes to, for all board members for an entire year, Online voting is open? All right.
Yeah. Says library files.
Bob's frowning. No, he's actually smiling.
Okay, that carries unanimously. All right.
And here we go.
Here we go.
I was thinking, it's 6:20.
Are we going to go through these individually?
Okay, second reading of board policies.
For this?
So, hang on one second. All right. So as per our discussion at the last meeting, the staff has made changes to the following policies, BP 2220, BP 2330, and BP 2340. Let's get a motion in a second, then we can open it up for discussion and look at each and go through each one. So...
Move for approval.
Okay. Iverson?
Wait, can we take, yeah, can we take them one at a time, please?
Yes, we'll take them one at a time. Okay. So...
We have a second?
We're gonna, we're not going to do it for all of them. We're just gonna, we're gonna take them each one.
Okay.
Okay, so let's go to 2010.
Let me get a clarification. So when you talk about this one, are you going to then move, are you going to vote on it, or are you going to move to the next one?
That's a good question. So, the question is, do we look, do we look at one and vote on it, or do we look at it, have discussion on it, move to the next one, then move to the next one, then move to the next one, and vote on everything at once, or are we going to literally take a vote on each board policy?
We need to take a vote on each board policy.
But let's get consensus on who wants to do what.
Can't we just, are there one in particular that everyone would want to have more discussion on?
There's no way we can put them together, because then if you disagree with one, you have to vote no on all of them. That doesn't make sense. We need to take them one at a time, plus for the public record.
Can we do it like we do a consent calendar, like if there are some that...
Poll one?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
For each one. If there's no, for each one, if there's no disagreement, it's adopted by consent, but then when we get up to one that we have discussion about, then we vote on it.
So we can pull them, have discussion on it, right? We can pull the one that we don't agree on and have discussion on it and come to an agreement.
Can we, can we poll one that we believe is going to need discussion and just approve all the others?
I would like to do it one at a time, for transparency, to show how we vote on each of these policies. It's only 6:20, and this is our main topic, and it's our board policies, which are very important, and I think that we should just take them one at a time and vote.
What would the rest of the board, Segura, what would you like to do?
Well, I have the same question that trustee Iverson does. Is there one in particular that we don't?
There are several.
So, yeah, so if there's one to poll, do you want to vote on each one one at a time, or just poll the one and vote on everything else?
Just call them down the line, then.
Okay.
So how are they going to record this in the minutes?
One at a time.
Okay.
So do a first and second on each one?
So do a first and second on each one. Okay. All right. All right, so let's take 20, BP 2010, do I see a motion for BP 2010?
Move for approval.
Second.
Iverson Segura? Is there any discussion on BP 2010? All right, by consensus, we, well-
Okay, I can just mark it unanimously.
How do you wanna do that, okay. All right, BP 2105?
Oh, can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Are we doing the APs separate?
APs you don't do, they're just there for you to look at.
Move for approval, BP 2105, right?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, Iverson Baker?
Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, approved by consent. Okay. BP 2110, vacancies on the board.
Move for approval.
Second. All right, we have Iverson Quaja? Any discussion? Approved by consent. BP 2220, committees of the board revised to include the names of the subcommittee. Motion in a second?
Move for approval.
Second. Iverson Segura? Any discussion?
Yes, so at the last meeting, I think you actually said that the consultant really didn't recommend subcommittees, I think we all established that we definitely wanted to have an audit and finance committee, but we were calling into question the need for a legislative committee and a real property committee. I think especially the legislative committee, I've been on that committee, I don't think it's needed, if we wanna bring forward a resolution to support a certain bill, we could do that as an individual and bring it forward to the whole board. And so just being mindful of staff time, and especially now that we've talked about having minutes at those meetings and having them posted, and that requires staff time, I'd like to propose that we get rid of the legislative committee. I'd actually also prefer to get rid of the real property committee, because I feel we should be talking about those issues as a whole board, we should be all getting updates on the status of our properties and the, all be weighing in on the direction of those properties, but especially the legislative committee, I don't, I don't think that we need that.
I believe that this is a vote on this policy, not, not a vote on, we would have to do a whole separate vote, an agenda item, on removing committees, I believe.
Well, we never had them in the policy and now we're putting them in the policy, so-
So the, so the question is not removing the committees.
Yeah.
It's removing the language, so it's either the language, it's not about the committees existing or not, it's about this policy. So-
So this isn't a way to get rid of these committees by not putting, okay.
No.
You'd have to come back, you could come back with another item.
However, I would argue that taking them out of the policy would not, would be fine, I don't think it's necessary to have them in here, 'cause then if we do wanna make changes-
Then we gotta change the policy, I agree.
So unless it's legally required, I would just strike that.
I disagree, I'd call the question.
I agree with Jennifer, and I move to amend the motion to strike the committees from the policy.
Yeah, so the committees still exist, but they're just not in the policy.
Right.
So I move to amend the motion to strike the committees from the policy.
Well, you're not really amending-
We are, because this is the second reading, so we're adopting the policy and this is what's being recommended.
So you wanna vote on the amendment first?
So, we'll, we'll-
First and second.
Yes, so we'll vote, we need a motion on the amendment and a second. So the amendment, let's just be clear.
Yes, please.
The amendment is to strike, so the first motion was to accept the policy as it is here, the amendment is to strike the committee list language. So I need a motion in a second on striking that language from the policy.
You know what, actually, I withdraw, I withdraw the amended motion, I, if we're gonna have these committees, I think we should, it should be clear to the public what standing committees we do have, and we have them, so I withdraw my amended motion.
Can we call the question on the original motion in second?
Could you please tell me who was the second on that?
On the amended motion, it was trustee Martin, on the original motion, it was a motion for approval and had, did you second?
All right.
Iverson and Rosa Segura.
So, Iverson Segura, so the, there is no amendment, the amendment's been withdrawn and we're looking at it as, as is, BP 2220. Okay. All right. So, seeing nothing else, no other comment, approved by consent. Okay. BP 2315, closed session. Any comments, concerns, questions? Seeing none? Approved by consent?
Move for approval.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Move for approval.
Iverson Baker.
And I'm marking that, you know.
That last one got me a little confused.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, by consent, it's approved.
Okay.
BP 2330, quorum and voting revised revision of definition of a quorum as requested as per policy analyst. We need a motion in a second?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, Quaja? Iverson?
Okay, this one I do want to amend, so it has a list of what requires a two-thirds vote, and something missing from that list, which has come up several times, more than these other items, is to place a general obligation bond on the ballot that requires a two-thirds vote. So I just, I think that should be reflected here, and I did confirm that, so I've moved to amend the motion to add in, under the list of two-thirds majority, what requires a two-thirds majority, a general obligation bond, placing it on the ballot. So if you go to- Right, so it says the following actions require two-thirds majority of all members of the board, and it lists several things, but it doesn't mention that placing a general obligation bond on the ballot, and we almost just did that, so, and that will come up again in the future, so I think that should be codified in the policy.
I'll second that.
I think my only piece, I believe, and I thought we took a look at it, believe this is in law already, so it's, I don't think you can place a general obligation bond in the state of California without a two-thirds.
Exactly, so that's, right, yeah, it's the law, that's why it should be in the policy, it's because people don't know that unless it's in the policy, all of these things are based on law.
But Brown Act is two-thirds.
What do you mean? Brown Act is two-thirds, what do you mean?
So Brown Act calls for two-thirds majority vote.
For what?
For everything.
No, the, simple majority, we have a simple majority for most of things that we vote on, and then they're clarifying things that we need more than a simple majority, and one of those things is placing a general obligation bond on the ballot.
Can you scroll down a little bit?
Yes.
To see what else we have.
That's the end of the list, I did, this, I did check the templates and it's not recommended by the analyst or by the CCLC templates separately, I think this might be a case of having to do legal review to see if there's any reason why it's not in there.
We could, if you could amend your motion a bit, include it, and pending legal review, that would reject it or accept it, that we can move forward on that?
Sure, yeah, 'cause I think it's just an omission from the template, so, do you want me to restate it?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, so I move to amend the motion to add, under the list of what requires a two-thirds vote, a general obligation bond, placing it on the ballot, pending legal review.
Second. All right. I guess we need to take a vote on that, or just if everyone agrees?
No.
Okay.
So we vote on the amended motion first?
That's what we are doing.
Okay, how, do you wanna do it orally, or how are we doing it?
Well, we need, yes, we're just do, we were doing all of them by consensus, but we don't have consensus yet on that one. Segura?
I'm sorry, we were gonna say something?
How are you voting on that? On the amendment?
If it's, if it's the law already, and it's a California law, I mean, it's a given that, even if it's not under the policy, it's a given that we're not gonna put a bond up for vote if, if it doesn't comply with, with California law, so that's a no from me.
Okay. Baker? It's a yes for you? And Quaja?
I will abstain.
Okay. And I will say no. So, the amendment- So the amendment does not pass, and so we go back to vote on the original, which is as, as is, and, and I imagine we're gonna get the same kind of vote, so trustee Martenson, how do you vote on it as is?
I vote yes, I'm not gonna be petty.
I'm sorry, what?
I vote yes.
You vote yes, okay, and Segura, you vote yes?
Yes.
Okay. Iverson?
Yes.
Baker? Yes. Okay, so that, oh, Quaja, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
All right, so through consensus, that passes. And, and now we're on to 20, no, yes, 20, BP 2340? Agendas. Any? First and second?
For approval.
Second. Okay, Iverson Quaja? Any discussion?
Yes. So I passed out a document to the, the whole board and all of the stakeholders with the same changes I had mentioned during the first reading.
Trustee Martenson, it's posted as well.
What's that?
It's posted.
It's posted, okay. Okay, so I would like, because of all the issues we've been having with getting items on the agenda, I want it to clearly state that board members go through the same process as the public, and so there's two places where I would just like to add "and" board members, so, one, that we can place items directly related to the business of the district on the agenda, just like the public, and two, that just like members of the public, we do that by submitting it in writing to the president two weeks prior to the meeting. And then the last statement, I wanted to add the policy statement that's right now in the AR, that it's the desire of the board that supporting documents be uploaded with the agenda 72 hours in advance of the meeting. And so I, has it, was there already a motion? Yeah, Kyle, so I move to amend the motion to reflect my changing, changes that board members, that it be codified that board members place items directly on the agenda, just as the general public, and that documents be uploaded 72 hours in advance of the meeting.
So Amy, just to clarify, the parts that you've, that you've submitted for change are the parts that are underlined?
Yeah, so maybe that's a simpler, because there's a lot and that's why I wanted it uploaded, so I just, I moved to amend the motion to reflect my proposal, that my proposal be adopted for the agenda policy.
I will second that.
And any discussion on the, on the amendments? I would like to, I would just like to add that adding "and" board members does change the meaning, and, and also that the, the line at the bottom is, is in the AP, is the how, and that that should not be in the policy, in fact, our, our meeting, our streamlined meeting committee, you know, definitely put something like that in when we discuss streamlined meetings and agendas and getting, you know, that we desire to have documents in by a certain period of time, so I, I don't think that that's policy information, so those are my two concerns.
I haven't, I don't see an issue with the current policy or the one that we're approving, aside from the recommended amendment, amended changes, so I would just like to, well, we have a motion and you have a second for the amended, so, do we need to take a stroll vote on that?
I have a question about the, the final part about the 72 hours, and I agree that it's not necessarily a policy statement, but since it is something that was defined by the subcommittee and requested by the subcommittee, and since the board doesn't approve the APs, I kinda feel like it would be good to have it in a document that we do approve.
But we did make those recommendations and it is in the AP, so, and that's what our committee was doing was-
Changed with our, our-
Yeah, scroll down.
Okay, so furthermore, it's clarifying that just as the member of the public can place items on the agenda, I can't imagine any board member not wanting it to be clear that just as the members of the public can place an item on the agenda, so can board members, and that just as the member of the public only has to submit it in writing two weeks before, that it's that clear, that simple, that so can board, board members, and any board member arguing against that, it goes against your own interest as a board member trying to represent the public that you're supposed to serve.
I don't agree with that statement.
Okay, wait, I wasn't done, Kyle, excuse me, as far as the last statement, it is a policy statement, it's the desire of the board that documents be uploaded 72 hours in advance, that's a policy statement, because it's saying our desire, how Dr. Kraft implements that with his staff is the how, and that's what belongs in the AR, so I think we're losing this distinction between policy and AR, policy is what we want, and then the AR is how Dr. Kraft will implement that with his staff, so it is a policy statement.
That can be looked at different ways, I mean, I think that, I see the uploading of documents as a how, not a what.
It is, the uploading is, but the desire of the board is a policy statement, it's, it's the what, how is another issue, how Dr. Kraft makes that happen with his staff, and again, both points, clarifying that board members can put items on the agenda by submitting it in writing two weeks in advance, and that we want the items, the support docs, 72 hours in advance of the meeting, why any board member wouldn't want that is, I don't understand, because it's in our interest to make it easy to get items on the agenda and to have the document 72 hours in advance of the meeting, it's in our interest.
Can we call the question? We're just gonna go back and forth right now.
How is, how is the issue of board members putting things on the agenda addressed in the one that's presented previously? Is it?
Can you go to that BP?
The amended changes indicates that we have a problem with our current agenda process.
We do. We do, Kyle, trustee Iverson, we do, that's why I want this in here, is because we've been struggling with board members getting items on the agenda for a long time, trustee Rios talked about that at the last meeting, he supported these changes to, once and for all, make it clear and simple that board members can put items on the agenda, and that it's a simple process, we submit it in writing two weeks in advance, and it comes on the agenda, and then if we don't want it on the agenda, we pull it, but at least then one person, the board chair, isn't at the gatekeeper deciding what can go on the agenda and what can't, it needs to be put on the agenda, that simply, and then as a whole board, we act if we wanna take something off the agenda, but at least we're doing it as a whole board, and not what currently is happening, which is the board chair's deciding what goes on the agenda and what does not.
Trustee Rios isn't here, so can we just call the question?
And I don't believe that that's what trustee Rios meant, but-
Can we call the question?
Let's, yes, let's go ahead and, uh, let's go ahead and take a vote on the amendment. Trustee Martenson on the amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Segura on the amendment?
No.
Trustee Iverson?
No.
Trustee Baker?
Yes.
Trustee Quaja?
Abstain.
Trustee Mancuso? No. So by, uh-
So that one fails.
So that one fails, so we go back to the original, BP 2340, and trustee Martenson, how do you vote on that?
No.
Segura?
Can I ask a question?
It's, it's on the, yes, it's on the original, so we're voting on the original motion now.
I just wanted to know what BP means on the whole context of the whole thing.
Board policy?
Doesn't that address the board? So that's a yes, on my, on my part.
Very good point. Thank you. Iverson?
Yes.
Baker?
No.
Kwajha?
Yes.
Mancuso, yes. All right. Moving on to 2345, public participation at board meetings. Any comment or question there? Let's pull that up.
Just a second. Yes, but do you want to put a motion on the table first?
Yes.
Move for approval.
Second. Iverson, Segura?
Okay, hold on.
It's like fourth down, Catherine.
2345?
No, this, yes, 2345.
Okay, I just couldn't find it in the, okay, I'm sorry. And the first and second, please?
Iverson, Segura?
Thank you.
Are we pulling it up?
I couldn't see it.
It's there. Yeah, it's right. It's there.
Are there any comments or questions on this board policy?
Yes. So I'm wondering, it sounds like we, it looks like we need to put what the time limit is for each speaker, and then mention that people needing translation have doubled the amount of time. So I'm wondering why we don't have that in this, now that we're at the second reading.
I'm sorry.
It was in there before, wasn't it? And then it was taken out. I wonder, I mean, I don't know what the intent was taking it out, but it kind of makes sense not to have it in there because then if you've got huge people, you can change it. You can say, we're only going to do two minutes tonight.
Discretionary, yeah.
That's true. That's a good point.
I think we can always lengthen with a vote of the board, but I think we should have our base, our minimum amount of time that we're going to give people to speak. And then I think it's also informative to the public to know that people who need a translator get twice the amount of time. So I think that needs, should be in here. And I know we've been saying five minutes, but I heard there was maybe an interest last time in having it be three. I'm okay with five, but whether it's five or three, I think it should be in the policy and then that we make the note about people needing translation getting twice the amount of time.
Are you amending the motion?
Yeah, but I think we should discuss about the amount of time.
Well, I think first we have to discuss whether anyone agrees that a time should be in it. I'm in agreement with Baker makes a good, trustee Baker makes a good point, that it takes away our freedom, discretionary freedom to make that change.
Well, it really doesn't. We can lengthen the time, but people need to know how much time they have at a minimum to speak before the board.
Say 20 seconds.
They do every, yeah. They do every meeting, so.
So then we should say it in the policy so people know. So if we're going to stick with what's on the agenda, it's five minutes. So I move that we amend the motion to clarify that the public has five minutes to speak before the board, and that we clarify that people needing translation get double that amount, which is 10 minutes.
I wouldn't have a problem with putting an amount in there, but I would with the caveat that the board chair has the discretion to change it.
That means we don't have one.
Well, we always have the discretion to lengthen.
No, I mean to shorten.
Well, then, we, maybe we choose a shorter time that we want to lengthen. But we need a minimum, that we can't just make it arbitrary that people are going to have 30 seconds when they come before the board. We need something reasonable that we can then lengthen.
If somebody is coming to the meeting, most likely they've looked at the agenda and they know the timeframe that's on the agenda.
And the policy keeps it open, which is reasonable.
There's a reason why we have these policies, is to spell out our procedures, right? So if there's a time limit, and this is called public participation at board meetings, and they're even telling us right here that if we're going to have a time limit, we should put it in the policy. We should put it in the policy.
Got it. Is there a second on the motion?
I would move for three minutes.
Okay, I'll amend my, I move to amend the motion to state that members of the public have three minutes to speak before the board, and that those needing translation have twice that amount, which is six minutes.
I'll second that.
All right. Trustee Martenson, how do you vote on the amendment?
Yes.
Trustee Segura, how do you vote on the amendment?
No.
Trustee Iverson, how do you vote on the amendment?
No.
Trustee Baker, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Kwajha, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Mancuso, no. So the, as the trustee is a advisory vote, the amendment fails. Through consensus or through the 3-2 vote. So we go back to the original policy, 2345. And how do we vote on that? Trustee Martenson?
No.
Trustee Segura?
Yes.
Trustee Iverson?
Yes.
Trustee Kwajha?
Abstain.
Trustee Baker?
Yes.
Trustee Mancuso, yes. BP 2360, minutes. I need a motion in a second. So move. Second. Segura, Kwajha? Any comments or questions?
Yes.
Let's pull that up.
Close this one and open the other one. Thank you.
All right.
So as I said at the last meeting, and this has been another ongoing issue that we have an opportunity to clarify and move forward on, and that is the issue of minutes being clarified in our board policy, in the minutes policy, that we also take minutes and post minutes at our standing committee meetings. So, which came up at the audit committee meeting, and there was an interest in the audit committee meeting and seeing that changed in the actual policy. I know it's been now added to the AR, but as we've already talked about, those can be changed. And so I would like it in the actual policy. Standing committee meetings are subject to the Brown Act, and I know minutes aren't required by the Brown Act, but within the spirit of the Brown Act, we should have minutes taken at those meetings, and they should be posted. So I want to move to amend the motion to add "and" its standing committees. So the sentence is currently, the CEO shall cause minutes to be taken at all the meetings of the board, and I want to add "and" its standing committee, standing committees.
Trustee Martenson, would you be willing to amend that to say all meetings of the Board of Trustees that are subject to the Brown Act?
That is the standing committees.
I know, but it's a little.
I was thinking the exact same thing.
So it includes them?
Yeah. That way, if we change things around on the other policies, it's.
Yes, I would.
And I would second that.
Does that make sense to Carol Lee? It does not.
I'm sorry. You're not going to use the word committee?
Yes.
So all meetings of the Board of Trustees, Board of Trustees and committees that are subject to the Brown Act?
Is that okay? That.
I don't understand the point.
Can I ask why you want that change? I'm just curious, because the Brown Act doesn't require minutes, but are you just saying because it's in the spirit of the Brown Act?
Yeah, exactly. And also since.
It helps to define the committee.
Exactly. Because the standing committees, you know, not necessarily, people aren't necessarily going to know the difference between a standing committee and an ad hoc, and, you know, they just see a committee. So if we are clear that it's a committee that's subject to the Brown Act.
Okay. So yeah, so we'll change the motion. So I move to amend the motion to state that the sentence that says that the CEO shall cause minutes to be taken at all meetings of the board to add "and" committees subject to the Brown Act. Yeah.
Second.
No, it's okay. No, either way. It'll read either way. It's fine.
It'll read, okay. Okay. All right. So.
Do we have a second on that? That was me.
Did. It was Martenson, Baker. So vote on BP 2360 on the amendment. Trustee Martenson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Segura?
Yes.
Trustee Iverson?
I think it's redundant. No.
Trustee Baker?
Yes.
Trustee Kwajha?
Yes.
Trustee Mancuso, yes.
And then, and then the vote on the original motion?
And then the vote on the original motion, exactly. Trustee Martenson, how do you vote?
No.
Trustee Segura, how do you vote?
No.
Trustee Iverson, how do you vote?
I'm sorry to interrupt. You, your first vote was to amend the motion?
Yes.
Now you're voting on the amended motion. So.
Oh, that's right. We missed it. Sorry.
It is a little confusing.
Yes.
You could conceivably not do the same.
You're right. Okay. We voted to amend. Now we need to vote on the amended motion. That's correct. All right. Trustee Martenson, how do you vote on the amended motion?
Yes.
Trustee Segura?
Yes.
Trustee Iverson?
No.
Trustee Baker?
Yes.
Trustee Kwajha?
Yes.
Trustee Mancuso, yes. So the amendment passes. Now we go back to vote on the original motion. No? Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. BP 2725, board member compensation. No proposed changes there. This one should be easy. Do we have a motion in a second?
Move to approve.
Second.
Kwajha, Segura.
Well, alphabetically.
Kwajha, Segura.
Which one are we doing? The 2725?
Board member compensation.
We already did that.
But that was to actually increase it. This is just saying.
This is the policy. If I see no comments or changes or amendments to this, it passes by consensus. Okay. And how do we wrap that all up? Is it wrapped up?
The margarita?
We did.
Okay. Thank you, Baker. Okay. 12.9, approval of TPX communications agreement. Motion in a second, please.
Move for approval. It's about time.
Second. Iverson, Kwajha? And we're back to electronic voting?
I'm still working on.
We'll wait.
Thank you.
And let you catch up.
See if this works. Okay, here we go. Sorry. Okay, we had Iverson.
Kwajha?
Okay, there's your online voting is open.
And trustee Kwajha, how do you vote?
I already did second, so that does make a yes, right?
Yes. No, you'll need to.
Yes.
Yes. Somebody could second a vote and still vote, could second a motion and still vote no.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes for me.
Got it. We're waiting for trustee Segura?
I have to log back in. That's a yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you. That carries unanimously.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Here we are. Standing committee and other reports, 13.1. District Auxiliary Services Foundation Board of Director, Segura. I think you guys met, right?
We met, yes. We met on the 26th. Let's see. We went through the quarterly financial report, including the DOS, that included fire relief fund that Vice President Parker submitted. We also discussed the service changes for the cafe and the restricted earnings. There was discussion regarding a lot of donors, you know, have questions about their donations or where they're going. So that was also discussed. Also, changes to allocations from the NVC Foundation, how we're going to use those or how we're going to handle those. And there was also discussion on getting a more detailed budget from the cafe. Vice President Parker provided a proposed budget for 1819. We reviewed the changes for the upcoming year, and discussion, we discussed the DOS funds in support for specific needs and the use of restricted funds. We reviewed the schedule for Festival Napa Valley. Carol Lee provided a review of the schedule. Festivals Orchestra Academy kicks in on July 13th. That's tomorrow, right? We can go there because we've got a party to go to, don't we?
That's right.
Yeah. We approved an amendment to the Barnes and Noble Agreement, Operation Agreement. And we gave it a five-year extension. It was recommended by the board to go forward with the revised contract amendment to, you know, for us. So, and we just approved that amended. We ratified that agreement. Merrick's Food Truck is a great success. So they have contracted with the Silverados to provide the food, the concession, food for all of their games. And, you know, it's ongoing discussion regarding the percentages of the concessions, revenue concessions between DOS and the Silverados. So we did some work. We adopted a calendar. Our next meeting is the 25th of September, following December 11th, and we go into June 25th, 2019. So.
Great report. And I've had food from that food truck. Pretty awesome. All right. Vitaculture Riley Foundation Board of Directors, Baldini, but he's not here. So do we know anything? Anybody else?
There'd be no report.
Okay, no report. Okay. And Legislative Affairs Committee has not met. Audit and Finance Committee has, did not meet, correct?
Yeah, we haven't met, but just two things. So I noticed that we have a link on the board webpage for the Audit and Finance Committee, but it's still not active. And so the minutes from our last meeting that were approved don't have any place to be posted. So I'm hoping that that link can become active, and that our minutes from our last meeting that were approved could be put online. And then our next meeting is Thursday, September 6th at 4:00 PM.
All right. Thank you.
Excuse me. I do believe the minutes from April 26th. Well, the last approved minutes are posted on Board Docs on that meeting agenda. You can post the minutes there. So that's where I've put them.
So they're there. Will they also be going, what's going to be going, will they also be going to the link for the actual meeting?
I can show you where. I'm not sure what you mean.
Once we have an active link, we can see what will be on there. But right now, it's not active.
Board Docs, I would think, would be the more easily accessible. It's on Board Docs, right?
Well, the problem is they have to go through all of our meetings to find the minutes for the Audit and Finance Committee versus if they go to the Audit and Finance Committee and they can see our minutes.
Easy to post them there.
Yeah. So if we could have them posted there, that would be great.
Real Property Management, I don't believe they've met. Have they? Kyle just walked out.
No, they have not.
Okay. And we know that McPherson distinguished a word is over for now. Correct? Okay. Future agenda item request. So what we have here are the, a couple of things. So the information from the AP, but also staff has created a log. Thank you for putting that work into that. Great job, Catherine. And it'll be updated after each meeting to track where we are, and also to be able to bring any items back if we need to for board consensus.
I'd like to talk about the AR because now we're posting it right above the item. And I also want to talk about the tracking thing, so when it's appropriate time.
So let's, well, let's go into, first of all, any agenda items that are requested that aren't currently requested.
Okay.
Okay. So seeing none, no additional?
No, I do. I have one. Well, two. I want to talk about the one that you didn't bring forward.
So any items, so agenda items?
On the agenda that we, as a board, I was a little disappointed that after we spent so much money surveying and, you know, talking about the bond, that the only thing that happened in the end with the last survey results was. that the only thing that happened in the end with the last survey results was that we got an email saying we weren't putting the bond on the ballot. So I would like to have an information item where we actually see the final results and talk about them and interact with them. And talk about how the decision was made to not, the item, to not put a ballot, a bond on the ballot. I feel like that needs to actually be presented and talked about and discussed. So I'd like to see that come forward as an information item, so we can talk about it. So we got an email, but we can't talk about it because it wasn't put on the agenda. I think that's something, after everything we went through, that we actually hear a presentation and talk about as a board. And then, secondly, the issue that was brought up by Rafael Manzo about student rep on the faculty hiring committees, if that could come forward as an information item, if that's true, if that's happening.
That can't be on our agenda.
So, this process is not even close to being done, so it would not be appropriate at this time. And that process is mutually agreed upon. So it will come to you, having gone through mutual agreement.
Okay.
So. So, okay, so we, so you just requested, so I only heard one new agenda item request. And that was that we need to have an additional conversation about the bond and the ballot. So, so per our AP, individual board member wishing to place an item on the agenda will have an opportunity to make this request each board meeting under the item Future Request. Should there be disagreement as to the appropriateness or timeliness of the item by a single board member other than the board president, agreement by a single minority, three or more, is required. So does everyone, is there consensus on putting that item on the agenda? Or is anybody in a?
Well, I want to talk, I have a timeout too, you go Kyle first.
I don't, so, we haven't had it come back from, the recommendation from staff is that we're not pursuing a bond, so I don't understand why we would need to have it be a future agenda item.
You were in here, the idea was to bring a report, a full report as to, you know, what were the final results? And that led to that determination since it kind of just was announced rather than coming to the board for decision.
Don't we have that, the?
I actually.
We got it posted, we'd be happy to go through that PDF and answer questions and.
So, so the item is results of?
Okay, point of order, I would like, I didn't agree to this AR and this, I would like the legal counsel to review this because as I said before, I have a concern about us talking about an item that's not on the agenda. So, in this process, that's a problem with this process, that rather than just putting it on the agenda and then taking it off, we're talking about something that is not on the agenda. And I think that goes against the Brown Act and I would like this AR reviewed by legal counsel to make sure that this is appropriate.
An agenda item.
And to talk about the value of it, we have to talk about the item. And it's not on the agenda, so to sit here and talk about it, to decide if it has merit, is a Brown Act issue.
We are trying, what I'm trying to understand is what the item is, okay?
Do you want me to say again what my request is?
Because it just, it went on and on and on and on, and so, I'm not understanding, is it the results, that's what I'm trying to figure out?
And this is decision-making that went behind not putting it on the ballot. To be honest, I feel.
Talking about it.
So the, that's my item, I want to know the survey results to talk about them and to know the rationale behind not putting it on the ballot and the decision-making that went into that. That's my item.
Okay, so now, if anyone disagrees with that, all we need to know is if they do.
How can you know if you disagree if we can't sit here and talk about whether or not that has value to talk about in the beginning?
Very simply.
I would like the AR reviewed by legal counsel, us discussing an item and the merits posing call whether or not it should be on the ballot, on the agenda, whether or not that goes against the Brown Act. Versus agendizing it and then discussing it and taking it off.
I'm very unclear what you're trying to ask.
So, just this process of talking about something?
If we can divorce the process from the first one, just let me land on the first piece. So the item you're asking for?
Information discussion item. On the final results and how the decision was made to not put it on the ballot. The decision-making process.
That's the agenda request.
The rationale, et cetera.
That's the agenda request, okay. This, this thing about the AR going to legal counsel is not a part of future agenda request items. That is something completely outside of this.
My discomfort was sitting here right now and talking about this item and deciding whether or not it can be put on the agenda.
Under our current AR, I disagree with the requested agenda item.
Okay. I, Segura, do you have any?
I trust the process and how it came to the decision not to put the bond up for ballot. I think that you described it very well in your email. You know, it was a staff decision. And if they decided, if it was decided that it's not the time to go up for a bond, for all the reasons that you specified in your email and the current political situation, both federal level, state level, and local level, I think it's very prudent for us not to go. I mean, you know, I agree with the decision that was made and so, I would rather not see it as an agenda item in the future.
Okay. Trustee Baker?
I also trust the decision of staff, however, I think in the interest of transparency, since we spent a significant amount of time and energy and money on this effort, that it would, I don't know why my microphone keeps going in and out, but I think that it would, that there's no reason why we would not want to have a presentation detailing what went out in a private email to us and staff. I think that the public who also participated in this process have a right to hear what the end game was there and that this isn't necessarily the end perhaps, that it's just a not now. Starting to get into it, but I just think that, I think it's worth having a presentation, I don't think it's, I don't see why we wouldn't.
But I, okay, so presentation of the results. I could be okay with, with that. But I just, from experience of going through this bond thing before, that the staff recommendation is how it either happens or doesn't happen, and so. Yeah, but, well, I sort of heard that it might have been, but, so, presentation of the results sounds like the agenda item request. Okay.
Say that again?
Yes, please. So it's, it's presentation of the results, just go through that PowerPoint and walk through it.
So that's.
You had two trustees that didn't see that necessary, under our current AR, isn't that the process?
It takes a minority and we only have one, two, three, four, five of us, right?
Presentation.
It's three when you have seven people, but we have five people, so three people is a majority.
And trustee Koja?
I'm just going to abstain.
Okay.
I'd be curious to see at that point then what my fellow trustees that aren't here have to say about it.
If we were to do that, then we could go back on a couple of things.
Well, there seems to be a hotbed issue, so.
There were other hotbed issues and they are not here to vote, and so they don't get a say.
Okay.
All right. Okay, the agenda request is, is made and it is to have a presentation of the results.
So that would be an informational item, period?
Period, informational item.
Unless somebody wants to propose that you actually pass a resolution.
After the informational item, that would be, first it would have to come. So let's, let's wrap that up. All right, and then, I believe trustee Martenson, you had a question or something on the log?
Yes. So I, at the last board meeting, requested that the oil severance tax resolution that I wrote come before the full board at this meeting. I followed up per the process and submitted the same request in writing along with the resolution two weeks before the meeting. And it wasn't put on the agenda, and now there's a note saying that it's not on the agenda because the Legislative Affairs Committee voted not to recommend it to the full board.
Part, part, something got left off. Catherine, it was supposed to re, it was supposed to add that it was recommended again on June 6th to go to the full board.
I don't have a problem having that one on the agenda.
That's the, the June 18th, that's the date that it was requested. And it was the TDD because.
Wrong, this reads wrong, okay? This was supposed to read the date of the March, no, January. January Legislative Committee Results. And then it was supposed to read that it was then on June 18th at the meeting, it was requested to bring it to the full board, okay? It has not come back to the full board yet because what I wanted to, we have a new legislative committee, the legislative committee voted it down before. Did we want to take it back to the new legislative committee to discuss?
No, at this point, I had requested that it just come to the full board. I, I'm not on that committee anymore and I'm the one that did the work on that resolution. I even updated it because now several months had passed and so some of the stats were out of date, I took the time to update it. So at this point, I would just like it to come to the full board. To be honest, I was disappointed it wasn't at this meeting because there was no staff time involved, it was a simple item. And we had a light agenda tonight, so I was kind of disappointed that was not on the agenda, but I would like it to come to the next meeting.
I had clarification on it, so that's why I wanted to bring it back to the board again tonight. So, because I prefer to have the conversations in session. So I, so we'll bring it back. And, and I do want to make sure that everybody's aware that, you know, just because something gets requested doesn't always mean that it's going to be on the very next agenda. There may be reasons why we want to discuss it further or bring it back. And so, there's no harm, no foul if we bring it back next month versus this month.
I do want to say though that when we have the.
There is no legislation pending on this item.
It doesn't matter, we're, we can help, the more support, the more somebody's likely to carry a bill like that, so I want. So it'll be on the next agenda, that's what you're saying.
Next month's agenda.
Okay.
If we did a resolution, if we did put this on the agenda for a resolution for the board, then who does that resolution go to because there's no legislation? That's what I was trying to understand because.
We're expressing our support and it makes it again more likely that a legislator will, to the state legislators.
Could we perhaps just have it come back as an information and discussion item? And then if the board decides to do a resolution, do it as an action item at the next meeting?
I don't see any reason for that, we've, this has gone on for months and I'd like to come forward on an action item. And you do it because then, again, somebody is more likely, we could then take it to our state legislators and encourage them to sponsor a bill like this. You don't have to wait till there's an existing bill, you can do it to encourage somebody to sponsor a bill. But first we need to establish our support as a board for that tax. And so that's what I'd like to have happen. My understanding of what Laura Skolkin said at our workshop was that unless there was staff research needed, that the item would be placed at the next meeting. The only reason to delay is if there was staff research, staff time that needed to be spent on something or it was going to be coming up naturally at another time. None of that applies to this resolution, it's done and it's simple and it needs to come forward, please.
So yours, just from clarification, is have it to come as an action item?
I don't see an issue with that, let's just move forward with it.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, was there anything else on that log that we needed to discuss? I appreciate the log, Catherine. I think it's very helpful. Okay. And trustee, now we'll move on to trustee and board chair reports. Item 13.3. Trustee Koja, you want to start first? Tell us about your life as student trustee.
Sure, I don't have a lot to say, but I'll start off with, I attended the July 4th parade. Loved it, felt like a British royalty waving at people. The second thing is that our leadership retreat is going to be from August 6th to August 8th. That is a really important thing now. The thing to note is that we're going to have it on campus, so we're going to be saving a bunch of money. So, I think we can use that money for something beneficial for the students rather than putting it out, going somewhere and spending that money. Then there's the 2018 Student Trustee Workshop, August 10th to August 12th. So first I have my retreat leadership, then I have the board meeting, then I have the trustee workshop, and then the next day I have class. So, it's going to be a busy start of August. And, yeah, I think that's all for me.
All right, thank you, trustee Baker?
Not much, I went to the Police Academy graduation. And then yesterday, I participated in a webinar on this new student success funding model. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Trustee Martenson?
Just a comment. I was looking at the AP for this item, because they're posting them now, Boards' Duties, Responsibilities, and Board Reports. And I just, another thing along with the last item that I asked to have reviewed by legal counsel regarding the way we're doing agendas. I would like somebody to look at this statement in this AR that says, "If a member of the public has requested a trustee announce an event or activity to the board, the trustee can decide whether or not to make the announcement and will disclose on whose behalf an announcement is made." I don't think that's enforceable, I don't think trustees can be required to say on who behalf an announcement is made. So I think that needs to be looked at. Actually, when I was at the last trustee conference, I ran it by an attorney who was there and he said it's not enforceable because of the First Amendment, so I think that needs to be looked at. That's it.
Trustee Segura?
Went to the Police Academy graduation. July 12th, wait, I'm sorry, sorry. I was present, I was part of the group that hosted the researchers. Jose Hurtado made a very nice presentation to them in regards to the work he did at the college and what he continues to do in the community regarding education, so. So yes, they went, they left loving the Napa Valley College. That, and I further went with them to visit one of the farmworker centers. You know, hoping that, they're doing research for a good reason, so. Hopefully they'll treat their farmworkers as good as the Napa Valley does. So they took a lot of good information. And that's it.
Thank you.
And, oh, and I'm sorry, I missed the Fourth of July Parade, it sounds like a lot of fun.
Yeah, your name was on the bar.
I know, I was gonna write with trustee Iverson. But, but his, his son, his baby did a good job waving the flag.
Good job. He had a cute hat on too. Trustee Iverson?
That's my report, I attended the Fourth of July Parade. It was quite an experience riding on the back of the car waving at the public, but it was fun. And the college was well-attended with Harry Cattalago. He was actually my band teacher through elementary school up to high school. So it was really nice seeing him and having the band be a part of it and showcasing the college, so good job.
Thank you. My report, I have one piece of business to cover, which is according to BP 2745 Board Self-Evaluation. A self-evaluation is conducted every two years. In 2017, the board established its goals for the 2017 through 2019 academic years. In 2017, the Board established its goals for the 2017 through 2019 academic years. This year, I would like to suggest that in September, we have a pre-Board workshop on effective trustee meetings, and then our next self-evaluation goal-setting would occur in the summer of 2019. So put your thinking caps on about that.
Could we possibly do that as an extra meeting rather than as a pre-Word, Board Workshop, just so that we don't have the marathon meeting?
Sure, sure, we can consider that. We can toss that back and forth on some dates. Good idea. Maybe bring back to the Board next month to figure out dates or whatever. I attended the Police Academy graduation and also attended a Workforce Alliance of the North Bay Board Meeting, the Napa Chapter, which I chair, and Ron attended, and we had a speaker from the state on apprenticeship programs. Wasn't that interesting? And I think Ron certainly took some great information away with, from him and maybe is in continued contact there. As well as connecting with the Career Point Center, the Program Director, and making sure that our programs all end up available on the eligible training list for the workforce, for the Career Point, the workforce programs. And then I met with a council member down in American Canyon, David Oro. Saw Jennifer walking across the parking lot, recognized her little purse. But I bring that up because David said to me, you know, we talked about some of the meetings and things that he attends and how we can partner and, you know, please, I'm always out there begging people, please, you know, invite me, make sure I'm at the table, you know, we want to make sure that we're all at the table when community is talking about, you know, various projects and how they might affect the college or how they might affect, you know, skill sets that are missing throughout the community with employers and various things. So, and I had a similar lunch with Brad Wagonconnect, and he was talking about, he had just been somewhere where they were talking all about workforce shortages and, you know, skill sets that are needed and all of those kind of things. So I'm just, you know, I'm always trying to get people to remember that we're here and call us and tell us to come attend a meeting with them.
Are we, could we invite ourselves to the NICLOG meetings? Like to send a representative of this Board?
I don't know the answer to that.
I, I know that it's been discussed a couple times that, that the school district might send somebody, but they just haven't got around to it, so I don't know. It's, I don't know what the, if there's a, something that defines who's on that.
Yes.
So...
There is, but I don't know if that means...
That we couldn't...
We couldn't.
Crash it? Let's find out.
Crash it, I like that. Also the parade, and also attended yesterday, the Napa Working Families Coalition, which again is someplace and something that talks about housing and workforce and all the kinds of things that we need to be at the table discussing. And, that's it. All right. So, any reason to continue closed session? I don't believe so. Announcement of future meetings, we have our next regular meeting on August 9th and the following meeting on September 13th. And at this time...
Since you're talking about meetings, is there still a special meeting scheduled? Do we know anything about that? No? Okay.
I will adjourn the meeting at 7:25.